Okay, I hereby call this town meeting to order. I want to say welcome and as always, thanks for coming. Our intention should always be to educate, not separate. An issue I've been watching all over in many other towns in recent years is communication. We're losing it right here in Hatfield. And we do need ideas and suggestions. You see, long ago, this was a problem too. The towns had a town prior, long ago. There was a person that did just that. Went all over town to inform members of meetings and issues. After that, newspapers eliminated that need. Today, many either don't get the papers or have been not renewing their subscription. We hear that pretty often, more and more. Social media is being tuned out as well. So how do we, as a town, communicate outward about town issues and meetings, et cetera? Just as how do we hear from you on issues, inquiries, or ideas? One quick one was to send out town meeting notices in tax bills. Yet, sometimes those that go to a mortgage company, you probably will never get it. Another was to put it in the census mailings. Both were tried this time. If it helped, your feedback is really important. Some meetings are on YouTube. All meeting notices are posted in Town Hall. But again, it's just not easy to go there all the time and check. An email group, website, town calendar? Well, help is needed in maintaining and constantly updating those. Some of us are not all that tech savvy, so another hurdle. If you have any ideas, please share them with anyone in town offices or town government. We really do need ideas on how to communicate in such times. Well, here we are with another special town meeting. As we dig out of the accounting protocol we used for all these years and adjust to the way Department of Revenue wants it, it starts to reopen the doors of getting back on track that were closed to us during that time. So now I suppose these few meetings are necessary to keep moving forward. Again, as I always say, if it's time-sensitive, mandated, or a very real emergency, I guess we really do need to meet and act. But always watch for things getting into these meetings that really should be considered by many, as many as possible for annual town meeting. Most people always expect that annual town meeting is for dealing with issues outside of the area, sensitive or mandated. The Finance Committee is always asked to weigh in on any spending or money articles. It's a trust that if it can work or makes prudent financial sense, they will recommend or not whether they think we can afford it as a town. Or once in a while withhold a recommendation. Never as to the reason for the article, but watching our spending and future expenses we will be facing all too soon. However, there are times that mandates, usually unfunded ones, or demands by outside parties like federal, state, or insurance requirements make these recommendations much more easy for them to explain, do it or else. Or things where we have the resources to afford within our own budget. Yet, the articles and issues that just don't fit that mold, sometimes there's a need to present to you here, to ask you to make the decision where the result might be in raising taxes or not. That's on all of our shoulders, out of respect for the process. For the Finance Committee, it isn't always easy. But I guess you're like the Federal Reserve for us, always trying to plot a course where we don't stray out of the limits of sound financial sense. However, there are times when they need your help as well in considering some choices and proposals. As always, I just want to thank John Novak and your team for recording and posting these on Channel 15 as well as YouTube. So let's begin with the articles.
Sorry, I just had one comment. In regard to the notifications, we're working with Steve Gunn, and Steve is in the back trying to gather cellphone numbers and information so that we can actually text people to let you know that there's a special town meeting, rather than the actual phone call that surprises some people when, you know, they send it out. It's not really an emergency, but just notification. And so we're hoping to get the word out to more people via a text message. So if you could see Steve after the meeting and, you know, get him your information, then we can, you know, help that system work a little better and hopefully get the word out to more people. Thank you.
Certainly contact the fire department during the week at any time, but I know at town meeting, he's going to be doing poster boards and things about that. And it's all about communication. So sorry, Ed, why don't you start?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article 1.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 1, is in your handout.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of $390,000 to fund Phase 2 of the Town Hall renovation project, including a code compliant exterior ramp, elevator, and fire suppression system. And to meet said appropriation, authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow the sum pursuant to General Law C-44, Section 7 or 8, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, provided that any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with General Law C-44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount, subject to the approval of ballot question 1 on February 26, 2019 ballot, to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2, so-called the amounts required to pay for the bond issued to fund said appropriation. And this is recommended by the Finance Committee.
You've heard the motion made and seconded under Article 1. Is there any discussion? Fran?
Fran Gudgen, 29 Primrose Path. There's no doubt that we need to fund this additional expense. But my question is, where was our designer between 2016 and 2019 when these increases in the estimate were occurring? Why weren't we informed of this earlier? Why wasn't our designer on top of this in dealing with this situation?
You guys want to?
I'm thinking back now because we had a special town meeting, and it was voted in, and then we had the cost estimates came in. The cost estimates came in high. We then asked the architect to go back to the board and look at trying to come down lower on the cost estimate. And I believe they could only knock off a small percentage. We do have the architects here that can explain some of the cost increase, if you would like, to have them come up and make that statement. Mr. Shea, if you could come up here.
First, does anyone have any objection to them coming up to speak, to present? Okay? Okay.
Thank you all. Kevin Rothschild Shea, Architecture Yale. So we've steadily been working with the Select Board and the town manager.
Can everybody hear that?
Am I speaking close enough? Sorry. So we steadily worked along, and part of the process from the original point when the project was last funded, and that project funding included a revisit to the construction estimate from years prior. Once we had a contract in place, part of the design process included a budget update approximately 30% of the way through the process. At that juncture, we were closer, a little under actually, on the estimate. And then the next estimate by the contract, which was delivered and contracted by an independent estimator, not performed by our office, we had an independent engineer that produced the estimate, and both times saw the 80% of the construction drawings. So we were nearly complete with the drawings. The budget had grown to, I want to say about 5% to 7% above the funded amount. So at that time, we met with the Select Board and the town manager. We looked at opportunities to save, whether there was any material savings that could be had. And this was not a project that was ripe with material increases, like, you know, upgrades on flooring or ceilings. The majority of the project was contract-based requirement code, electric, fire suppression, elevator, the ramps. Those primary pieces were pretty well-defined. So one of the things we did at that time, knowing that we were right on the bubble in terms of the estimate and going out to bids, is we developed a series of bid alternates where we would have options to introduce those alternates, once we had competitive bidding in place, to help lower the number if need be. Even with all that in place, from the point of the time we went from the 80% estimate to the final estimate, that's when we received filed sub bids for each sub-trade, followed by general bids from general contractors. I think we received, what do we have? One, two, three, four, five? Seven general bids from interested contractors with a range that was firm between $2,277,000 to a, at the base level, to a high of $2,414,900. So we had a, we were not absent in the process, as the board, I think, knows. We were actively involved, pursuing the bidding and tracking the numbers. One of the things we'd like to note along the process is, in the engineering process, the flow tests for the water in the street came back low, and we actually had to introduce a fire pump, which I think cumulatively was $100,000 or $150,000 in additional equipment that we were trying to squeeze in. So even at that level, at the 80% budget, we were really close to staying on track. So I don't think we were absent in the process. I think we were tracking it very carefully.
Does that answer a question? Anyone else have any questions?
I believe in June, we found out that we were over. Is that correct? It was June, and then we asked to go back?
Yeah, June 29th, we issued the bid log. And we, you know, to bid it, it takes two to three months to bid the project with filed subs, GCs coming through. Then over the course of the summer, we met with the board, evaluated the bids, trying to see where the dollars were, what were the options. Then in the fall, of course, we were updating the budget and trying to develop a scenario that we could fund the project. And unfortunately, as you know, the wheels of justice sometimes turn slowly, but here we are. I think we've steadily been working closely with the board.
I hope that answers your question.
Is this a solid estimate at this point, or would we be back here for another round and have another two-week question?
So we feel this is solid. We have taken, with seven bids, seven actual bids in hand, excuse me if I'm not facing you. Seven bids in hand, we have not taken the low bid and presented it for you folks tonight. We have taken the average bid, the middle point, taken the difference between the funded amount, and then put a, applied the same construction contingency to that difference so that we're carrying through a conservative and workable number. You know, of course, we can't predict the bid climate, but we feel like we've taken a very safe and well-informed path that will ensure that we don't come back. And we're hopeful for competitive bidding, and with the contingencies and this competitive averaging approach to taking a conservative number, we hope that leaves money on the table such that it does not require to be expended with the next round. But I think we've taken a good, safe approach and have a good, solid number.
Okay. For those of you standing, there is some chairs over here. There's a few seats there, but, and if you feel you're making a little bit of noise, we can hold up for a minute and let you do that. That's okay. Is there any other questions for this gentleman? Michael?
Yeah, I don't know if, I don't know if I'll let you speak. Mike Cahill, North Street. I was just wondering if someone could explain how we came up with the $390,000.
Well, that'd be back to the estimates.
Can you just explain?
Sorry, I didn't want to stand in your space here. So the question is, how we came up with the 390?
You got to speak right into the mic.
I'm sorry.
The article that's in the article, right?
In the article, the 390. So basically, we took the funded, our budgeted amount, we took the difference to the average bid, which was, let's see, reading my math here. We had a budget funded at $1,655,000. We had an average bid of $2,240,000. That left a delta, or a difference of $584,866. We applied the 10% contingency to that, which then rounded up to a total of 643. Then the Select Board asked if we could try to proportionally break out what might be attributed to the ramp and lower-level increases or costs and the proportional amount to the project. And that difference created the 390 that we're talking about right now.
Okay. Any other questions? Then I guess we're going to move this one to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Article carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Doherty. I'm being gentle to you.
I move that we take up Article 2.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 2, is in your handout.
I move that the town vote to reauthorize the appropriation voted under Article 30 of the 2015 Annual Town Meeting, which appropriation lapsed because of the passage of time, and more specifically, to vote to appropriate and transfer from the Community Preservation Historic Resources Reserve Account the sum of $50,000, and from the Community Preservation Budgeted Reserve Account, a sum of 300, excuse me, a sum of up to $330,000, to be used to fund the restoration and rehabilitation of historic Memorial Town Hall, and to preserve its continued public use by bringing such building into full compliance with applicable laws, regulations, and orders concerning handicapped accessibility and safety, provided that such funds shall be applied only for handicapped accessibility improvements and safety-related improvements, to ensure the completion of the following items: installation of an elevator to furnish full access to all three floors of the building; fire prevention and suppression systems; selected demolition and installation of handicap accessible walkways; installation of an HVAC system; and additional handicap accessibility items and improvements as necessary, under the direction of the Hatfield Department of Public Works, with all work to be completed by September 1, 2020, and said funds to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee, as recommended by the Finance Committee.
You've heard the motion made and seconded under Article 2. Is there any discussion? Okay. Michael?
Is it possible for Bob Wagner to get up and explain?
Sure.
The rationale and kind of, I'm sorry.
That's fine, Mike. Bob Wagner, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. So in, as noted in the article, back in, at our May Town Meeting in 2015, we endorsed and voted this appropriation of funding, as it outlined in this article. But we had a deadline, which was the deadline provided by the state at that time to complete the work on Town Hall. And so, as I think, one of the main reasons we're here tonight is that we didn't meet that deadline with any of the work that was required after our last funding and project at Town Hall. And so, we actually blew through the deadline that was in this warrant article from 2015. Our town council advised us that we couldn't just sort of move the money along, but we had to actually revote or reauthorize the funding that we had approved back in 2015. Now that we're back on track, we have a solid estimate for work going forward. And you'll note that we have a deadline again in this one, which is the September 1, 2020, which is the deadline that the state has given us to complete all the work at Town Hall.
Thank you, Bob. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor of Article 2 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Article carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move we take up Article 3.
Second? Cindy? Okay. Article's been, it's been seconded to take it up?
Mr.? Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of $253,000 to fund certain improvements to the Town Hall, including the installation of a second exterior ramp to the basement, expanding the kitchen used by the Council on Aging, and relocating the building inspector's office. And to meet said appropriation, authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow said sum pursuant to General Law Chapter 44, Subsection 7 or 8, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, provided that any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with General Law Chapter 44, Subsection 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount, subject to the approval of ballot question 2 on February 26, 2019 ballot, to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2, so-called, the amount required to pay for the bond issued to fund the said appropriation.
Okay. I'm glad I didn't have to read that either. Okay, you've heard the article seconded and read under Article 3. This is one of those I spoke of earlier, where the Finance Committee is withholding recommendation. This is where it comes up to all of us. So is there any discussion on Article 3? Go ahead, Mike.
Mike Cahill, North Street. It appears to me that it's very possible, in fact, I do sincerely feel this, that this article is redundant with an article that we voted at a special town meeting on October 26 of 2016. And let me read that article if I could, just a portion of anyway. On that night, we voted to appropriate the sum of $325,000 to fund that part of the Town Hall renovation, which utilizes additional second exterior ramp to the basement, an expansion of the Council on Aging kitchen, coupled with dismantling and relocating the building inspector and the Board of Health offices, and to renovate such spaces, the purpose of which is to add and dedicate all such vacated spaces to meet the needs of the Council on Aging, and to meet said appropriation and authorize the treasurer to borrow and all that stuff. So at that meeting, we appropriated $325,000. And so, just to give you some figures that I actually was able to retrieve from Kevin Shea's most recent estimate to the community, which was provided in the latter part of last year, regarding the costs, the updated costs for the components involved in this aspect of the Phase 2 renovation. He estimated the kitchen would cost us $53,000. Some additional dish storage for the kitchen was another $10,000. The building inspector's office, that work on the building inspector's office was $16,000. The second ramp with a canopy was $160,000. All of that totals about $240,000. If we add a 10% contingency to that, the total then comes to $263,000. There in addition to that is the estimated cost for relocating the Board of Health Office, which was not in his numbers. And that comes to about $18,000. So a rounded total cost for what might happen in the Council on Aging area, if you will, including a ramp to the basement, is $281,000. So two years ago, we voted $325,000. So by my calculation, we've got at least a $40,000 surplus to deal with that project alone right now. And so my contention is that we don't need this article. We don't need this money. We have it already, and we can afford to do what we wanted to do two years ago downstairs and really make this space completely dedicated to the Council on Aging. And so with that as a background, I think I'd like to make a motion that we table this article.
Does he want to go right to the motion, or can we hold some other discussion? Or the motion's been made and seconded, so you have to deal with that. Okay. Is there a second on that? Okay. So the motion's been made and seconded, so we're just going to have to vote on the motion. All those in favor of tabling this article signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
All right, let's do that another time. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The nays have it. We're back to the article. Any other discussion on this article? Right over here.
Richard O'Day, Gore Avenue. I noticed on Articles 1 and 2, it was recommended by the Finance Committee. Article 3 is not recommended, and I was wondering if the Finance Committee could explain why they're not recommending it, since we're under a deadline by the state to improve the Town Hall. Thank you.
So the question the Finance Committee generally asks itself about these kinds of questions is, what's in the best financial interest of the town? So Articles 1 and 2 would involve us possibly being fined by the Architectural Access Board and then having to do the project anyway. So it seemed like that it was obviously in the best interest of the town to move forward with the required projects at the Town Hall. Article 3 is not required by the Architectural Access Board. It more comes down to, is this something we want to do? And because it's a debt exclusion and it's not a borrowing, the town itself is going to borrow the money, but it will be offset by taxpayers, like all of us paying more, it doesn't really negatively impact the town's ability to borrow money, or the town's ability to pay back the money, or the general budget of the town. So it really comes down to, do you want to raise taxes by the amount in the handout, which, this would be the only, the $253,000 by 4 cents a thousand, or $12 on the average tax bill, to do this project or not? And that doesn't really impact the financial situation that the town is in one way or another. It impacts your personal financial situation and mine, so we didn't feel like it was up to us to recommend or not recommend whether you should do that.
Chris? Carrie, I'll get you next.
Hi. Good evening. Christopher Smith, Prospect Street. Michael and I and many others, during this multi-year process of Phase 2, have, from time to time, asked, shouldn't we have an end game for the Town Hall? Shouldn't we first study where we want to go before we go? Why are we putting the cart before the horse? To go back to the gentleman who spoke before, this is not an urgent situation. The first two articles are. I think we need to study this, determine, first, where does the COA want to go? We've been asking this for a long time. What do they want to do ultimately? Can't seem to get an answer to this question. So why are we expanding that space down there when the needs seem to be changing? And I'll tell you, as a senior, I do go to the lunch. Three years ago, Betty Koch got up and said, there's only 15 to 18 people there. Today, there was eight. There's less. Yes, there's more seniors in the town, but they don't want to believe they're getting old. They don't want to use the services. It's perplexing. I don't get it. But if that is the case, perhaps the better, if we want to get them out of the basement, or us, out of the basement, maybe the place to put us is on the second floor of the Town Hall, which has a kitchen in it. And if there's only going to be eight to 10 of us a day, that's more than sufficient. That's one. I also talked with some of my fellow lunchmates and said, what do you think of needing a second ramp? They didn't, they thought that was crazy. You have one ramp and an elevator, good enough. So I think that we should vote this down and wait till we have a plan and know what we really want to use this building for. Thank you.
Carrie?
I'm also the Chair of the Council on Aging. So for everybody to have a general idea of this article, I'm all with Chris and Mike about, let's not put the cart before the horse. about, let's not put the cart before the horse, I think, honestly, throughout this whole process, and I'm in support of that we need the suppression system, and those are things that have to happen. So I'm not denying Articles One and Two, because they need to happen. However, as a taxpayer and as a person who sees what happens at the Senior Center, our Senior Center is awful. It's not what our seniors deserve. Our seniors make up a third of the population of this town, and they deserve a better place to go for their exercise programs, which, mind you, we have three days a week, we have chair exercises. Another day a week, we have, I'm going to get them wrong, but we have another exercise on Tuesday, and I think we now have another one on Thursdays. On Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, we have anywhere from thirty to forty people showing up for exercise that we cram into that little lunchroom, because there's not enough space. However, I'm a true believer that in this town, we also don't have the money to go maybe build another building. If we could move the offices, like we've talked about, upstairs and renovate the rest of the town hall like it should be, in one project, the taxpayers are going to pay one time, not a third time, because we're going to come back here next year, and we're going to be discussing, what do we do for the Council on Aging, what do we do for this, what do we do for that? On another note, if we turn this down tonight, One and Two is going to get rid of our kitchen, just so everybody's aware. If One and Two happens and we don't do something with Three, our kitchen is going to be at least a third, if not half the size it is. We won't be able to run our lunch programs, and that's what the seniors are going to lose. I don't think Article Three is the way to go right now, because I think we need more investigation into it, so I agree with tabling it. On the other hand, it's not something that should get put aside for another six months to a year, because in the end, the work has to be completed. The seniors deserve something, in my personal opinion, as a taxpayer, not as the Chair of the Council on Aging, but as somebody who's observed it, you could renovate that basement, you could put an air quality system in that basement, and you could keep it downstairs and open it up to be dedicated just to the COA, and move the building inspector and the Board of Health upstairs at some point in time. But I just don't think that the way we're going about it is the right way. I also don't believe that we need two ramps at three-quarters of a million dollars to be spent. We could do one ramp, or, as I've suggested at least at two other meetings, and I never got an answer to it, was, has anybody ever looked at having a vestibule outside where the ramps are, and that's the entrance, the elevator, to go up, down to all the floors, and you enter it from the outside, like some other facilities are, and you don't have ramps at all? Which would save us money, and that money could be used somewhere else in the town hall to finish the rest of it, so that we're not doing another phase, because that's what's going to happen.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thanks, Carrie. So I guess the comment I would make is regarding the two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, and I'll ask Kevin from the architectural firm to just confirm this for me. But the ramp itself, the second ramp, which I also believe is superfluous, since we're going to have the main ramp bringing us onto the main floor with an elevator to go up or down, that ramp cost is approximately a hundred and sixty or a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Is that correct for that secondary ramp? He's shaking his head up and down as a yes. So I throw that out there to say, out of the two hundred and fifty-three motion, which has been seconded and we're discussing right now, perhaps that can be lowered by the amount of the cost of the secondary ramp.
Hello, Pam Novak, Main Street. I guess I would just like to, I'm curious to hear a response to the first gentleman that spoke about if this was already voted and approved, a certain amount of money was voted approved a number of years ago, where is that money now and why can't we use that money? Why do we have to approve and vote in more money?
Do we want to talk on that? Well, no. You guys can handle it.
Oh, we haven't borrowed anything yet.
Go ahead. Stan, I'm going to let the Finance Committee grab one, but keep coming up.
Yeah, we haven't borrowed the money. So this is not, this is not actual money unless you borrow it and unless we bid for the items. The bids are going to be what the bids are going to be. This is just authorization to expend up to this amount of money. So, and I think Mike Cahill's point is probably fairly accurate, the question is, what's the downside, in my mind, to appropriating money that you might not use? If you don't use it, we don't, it doesn't happen, we don't borrow it if we don't need it, and it doesn't go on the tax rate, and it doesn't affect anything. The project is already defined in scope, so you're only going to spend what is in the scope of the project unless we decide to do something like not build the other ramp, in which case that would reduce the scope of the project. So really, the money just ensures in some way that we're not back here again, doing this again, because we missed our guess by seventy-five thousand dollars or whatever, and now we don't have enough money again, which is what happened last time, so.
Stan?
Stan Pichko, sixty-five Prospect Street. Two questions, actually.
Stan, a little louder.
Two questions, actually. One, if this isn't voted in, and as Carrie stated, the kitchen's going to be nibbled away at because of the elevator. So if Three isn't voted in, is this going to affect the cost of installing the elevator? And the second question is, is that ramp actually a second form of egress from the basement when there's an issue when the elevator drops and locks?
I guess that's a architect question.
So there's a host of questions there to try to answer.
Can you talk a little louder into the mic?
Sure, sorry. In terms of egress, the basement has two separate means of egress. The one on the, we'll call the relative west end, through the community room, through what is a former storage area, is being upgraded to serve as viable and rated means of egress. The elevator does not serve as a means of egress. And what was one of the other questions, sir?
If you don't do Item Three, will it impact the costs on Item Two?
If we don't do Three, it potentially could. So this gentleman's point is well taken in terms of the proportional costs and the estimates we have in hand. Good or bad, we've taken the budget numbers that I just read, showed you the delta, and then tried to proportion them out. If we don't approve the second half, regardless of how we've tried to summarize it and present it, that very well potentially leaves us short to complete the project. If we don't, if we take your funded one point six five five million dollars, and we've got the three ninety you just approved, that brings us up to close to two million dollars. That doesn't account for the engineering and soft costs, much of which has been invested, and more is yet to come to administer the construction, and it's below the lowest bid that we received last year. It doesn't even get us close to what we know to be a conservative, safe, viable bid. So my concern is, in the general view of things with the time that, you know, we've all invested, is that if we don't move on the second portion as a total approval, we potentially are short on the project. Does that help?
Mike, I see your hand coming up. I'll get you in a minute, David.
Yeah, I respectfully disagree with what the architect just said. If, we voted four hundred thousand dollars basically in Article One. We have available already, we've already voted as a community over the course of the last four or five years, one point eight million dollars. So if you add the four hundred we just voted to the one point eight, we have two point two million dollars available, not less than two million. And that two point two is just about equal to what his most recent bid is for the whole project. Okay, so that's one comment. The other comment is that I made a motion to table this article, not because I'm against it, against doing that work for the Council on Aging. I am a hundred percent, a hundred and ten percent for doing that work for the Council on Aging, basically dedicating the basement to them and their activities. And we have already appropriated three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars two years ago to do that, and that does include a second ramp. So if we decide not to do the second ramp, that's fine, but we've got three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars already allocated to a project that's estimated to cost two hundred and eighty thousand dollars most recently, all right? So we've got a surplus of money to dedicate to the lower part of the town hall. So, you know, I think that this is superfluous, this additional money, and when you think about it, if we add another two hundred and fifty-three thousand to the three twenty-five that we already voted two years ago, that's almost six hundred thousand dollars that we're saying we might have to use for the basement of the town hall, for a kitchen, to renovate two offices, and what else? Maybe to polish up the Council on Aging office? I mean, when you really think of it, it just doesn't make sense. And keep in mind that if we have that additional borrowing capacity dedicated to the downstairs of the town hall, we can't use that for upstairs. If we go over upstairs, we cannot use that money, because it's earmarked specifically for the projects in the basement. Okay? Also, to talk about what Sean was talking about, yeah, we can go out and appropriate this money or borrow it, but, I mean--
Michael, if you talk into the mic--
Your market for borrowing, but we won't use it unless we need it. But the other issue is, when we go out to borrow money, and an investment house or a finance source looks at us as a town, one of the things that they look at, and Sharon can talk about this, and Edwina can talk about this, they look at not just what we have borrowed in the past, but they also look at what we have appropriated to borrow. And if we've appropriated three hundred thousand dollars more than we need, and that increases our interest rate on a borrowing that we want at that point, that doesn't make sense. So, again, I think this is redundant, and I don't think it makes sense at all, and I think we can still go ahead with everything we need in the town hall without having to pass this article.
David?
David Keir, Bridge Street. I may be repeating something, but the key here to me is, this is to authorize us to borrow money. We could choose not to borrow that money, or to choose to borrow less money than is in this article. And I would also assume that if the powers that be decided that the second ramp was not necessary, that they wouldn't borrow that hundred and sixty or hundred and seventy thousand dollars to pay for that ramp, which would then decrease the amount of money that we would borrow. This article simply allows Edwina and Sharon and whoever else to borrow up to that money to pay for this project. This is not, we don't know for sure that we're going to spend all that money. We don't know for sure that it's going to increase the tax rate by twelve dollars per household. We're just trying to give everybody the most options possible, I think, to get all this work done and to satisfy the Board of Architectural, whatever, to make sure that we don't get fined, because that certainly is coming down the pike if we don't get it all done. That's what I believe. Thank you.
As he's coming up, now you understand why the Finance Committee, once in a while, reserves, holds back an opinion, because it's not such an easy, cut-and-dried solution. Go ahead.
Stan Pichko, sixty-five Prospect Street. Not doubting Mike's math, and not doubting what the architect came up for a fee, and if both those numbers are approximately close to each other, two point two million dollars, an alternative solution to Three, if we did have enough money, was to work with the market when the bid went out and turn Article Three into an alternative in your plans and specs. And if the market prices came in less, you would have enough money to pay for the ramp and the kitchen. And if the money came in higher on the bid, or the bid came in higher, then because Article Three is not a necessity, it just disappears. Suggestion.
Any other comments? Cindy?
Thank you. I just wanted to try to answer Mr. Smith's question from--
Cindy, can you hold the mic closer?
Sure. I just wanted to try to answer Mr. Smith's question earlier, and if I'm wrong, if my board members, please correct me. You spoke about putting the cart before the horse. I believe in two thousand and sixteen, the town did appropriate sixteen thousand dollars to do a needs and feasibility study on the Council on Aging space downstairs, and I don't believe that was ever completed.
Any other comments? Go ahead. I didn't see you. You've got to hit me.
As a town clerk, if we end up being short, this is already a two-step process. It's a two-thirds vote here tonight for this. Because it's a debt exclusion, you're required to have a second vote on it, which will be on February twenty-sixth at a special town election. If we don't vote this through tonight, you still, this election's still going to happen? We still have to vote on it on February twenty-sixth, and if, you know, they feel it's necessary, we'll, you know, either put it on the May, but then it holds up the process, because now, the whole reason for putting these articles here tonight was to get a jump on the bidding process, to get the work done on time. So, you know, I don't want to see, you know, I will if I have to, more special town meetings or special elections, but it costs money to have special town meetings and special town elections, too, so. And like they said, this is just an authorization to borrow. We're not necessarily borrowing that amount. We're just, best guesstimate is to, from the architects and the people that have been looking at this for quite a while, is to, you know, their best guesstimate, and it's a higher, you know, estimate, but conservative, so.
Joan?
Joan Cox, Main Street. I guess for me, everything hinges on what people up there have to say in response to Michael's point, that money has already been appropriated or been voted on for use for this, and so I'm really still very confused. Was, is this vote necessary? Is this new money? Is it, what, so can you clarify, or can you respond to Michael for, to help me understand whether this is a duplication?
Who'd like to grab that? Darrell, Lydia's willing to give it a shot, too. Let's give her a shot.
Correct me if I'm wrong. So in the past, we have appropriated funds, meaning you authorize the treasurer, the treasurer, to borrow money to fund this project. In the process, doing the bids and doing the estimates, as the plan went along, it was realized that the cost is going to be more than what was originally appropriated. So now we're coming back to appropriate additional monies on top of what was already appropriated, to try to match what these bids are going to come in at during the summer, so that we have enough money to cover it, to make, to do the project, when the second round of bids start coming in sometime this summer.
Do you want to give it a shot as well? I mean, the more clarity, the better people get.
Oh, I thought Lydia did a good job.
Okay. Thank you.
It, we haven't seen a bid yet, so we don't, in fact, know if this, if we have enough money. I hope we have more than enough money, and I hope, from my personal point of view, we don't have to spend all this money. But I don't think I want to come back to another town meeting where we have to appropriate more money to do the project. So to me, it makes sense to vote this, and then if the COA, in fact, does not want a the external ramp, we don't have to do it. Sean just asked the lawyer. Do we have to do it if we vote it? No. But we can't do anything that's not on that, that's not listed.
All right, Michael, one more, one more. Wait, why don't we let him get a shot first?
Russell Powell, Elm Street. I'm still confused. Are we talking about three hundred and twenty plus two hundred and fifty-three? Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, last shot, Michael. All right. Last shot, Michael.
Here's my comment, and with all due respect to Lydia, yes, the costs for the total project have gone up by $600,000, the total project. But the cost for the project in the basement...
Michael, to the mic.
The costs for the project in the basement have not gone up. Okay? And I shared the costs that were in the architect's letter of three months ago, in which he indicated what the costs would be for the items that would have to be done in the basement for the council on aging. And again, I'll go through that. 53 for the kitchen, additional storage in the kitchen for 10. The building inspector's office was 16. The second ramp, if you want to do that, was 160. A 10% contingency, plus the building inspector, the Board of Health's office brings it to $280,000. We, two years ago, allocated and appropriated $325,000. So we have $40,000 more at this point that's been voted for appropriation than we need. And so, this is a superfluous article. It's just, you know, we already have the money.
Okay. Fran?
This has nothing to do with money. I'm just wondering why we didn't have a building committee for a $2 million project? Why didn't we have a building committee for a $2 million project? It's unbelievable.
I don't know if we can answer that, but to my understanding, this has been going on for seven years now with the building. So, I can't speak from seven years ago. I understand what you're saying, but we've, in June, we had hoped to move and get this project going. That's when we discovered the bids came over. We asked the architect to go back and look at the numbers again, and they did, and they couldn't really change the numbers that they gave us. We were hoping to bring this up at the last special town meeting, but we discovered that if we did, if we do a debt exclusion, we would not be able to set the tax rate. And that's why we moved to have this special town meeting after discussion with the architect on the cost overruns and on the bids over. As far as a building committee, I wish I could answer that seven years ago, but I can't. I'm sorry.
Dedicated building committee would have provided some kind of consistent oversight. I think that's my point.
Okay. So, I'm going to move this for a vote. It's got to be two-thirds vote, or we're going to do... You have one more question? Please.
I guess I just wanted to know if you believe his numbers, if they're accurate? If anybody has anything to say about whether or not his numbers are accurate? Because I'd like to know what numbers to believe before I decide to appropriate more money.
The bids are not in.
Right, no, I get that, but, I mean, he's not pulling these numbers out of the air, so how do we know whether or not...
They're estimated numbers.
Okay.
But they're based on the bids from two months ago, which are estimated.
Okay. Kathy's gonna...
Hi, Kathy Gal, Depot Road. To me, it just kind of seems, with all due respect to Mike, this is what the job costs, as best we know. So, whatever happened before, it's not like the money is going to be diverted to other projects. I mean, if this is what the money costs, I don't see why we're still discussing this. It seems if we want the project to get done for the first two articles, where it needs some of the money of Article III, and if we want the council on aging to get the space that they need, at least until some other thing happens, you know, if you wait for the perfect solution, nothing ever happens. So, it seems a no-brainer to just vote for III and all be able to go home before it snows anymore.
All right. We're going to take this to a vote. It's got to be two-thirds. It might very well result in a count, because I'm going to be very fair about this. So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion carries. That was pretty clear. Do you, do you want...
Yes.
Okay. Article IV.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article IV.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article IV is in your handout.
I move that the town appropriate by transfer from the Community Preservation Open Space Resources Reserve Account the sum of $5,000, and from the Community Preservation Budgeted Reserves Account, the amount of $115,000 for the acquisition of a conservation restriction to reserve for conservation purposes, certain land located on North Hatfield Road, consisting of 23 acres, more or less, being part of the lot shown as Parcel 147.1 on Assessors Map 206, provided that the said restrictions shall run with the land and meet the requirements of land and constitute a perpetual conservation restriction under General Law C 44B, Section 12, and General Law C 184, subsection 31 to 33. Set funds to be expanded under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee.
You've heard the motion made and seconded under Article IV. Is there any discussion? Bob?
Bob Wagner, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. So, the town has before it, and this doesn't happen very often, so this may be new to a lot of folks. A lot of the farmland in town is taxed under what's known as the Chapter 61A program. It provides for a break on the property taxes as long as the land is kept in agricultural use. If the land is to be sold for a use other than agricultural purposes or conservation purposes, the town has offered, under state law, the right of first refusal of a bona fide offer for that property. It can also transfer that right of first refusal to a conservation land trust. When this property on North Hatfield Road was first brought to the town's attention by the owner and the potential buyer to take the property out of Chapter 61A, as per their purview, the Board of Selectmen asked a number of boards in town to consider whether or not this is one of those opportunities, and this is a rare opportunity. In fact, I can only think of one other situation in the last 10 years where this has come up, to actually exercise that right of first refusal. The Planning Board voted unanimously, the Ad Commission voted unanimously, and I know the Conservation Commission voted on it, I don't know if they voted unanimously, but all three commissions voted to encourage the board to consider, in this case, exercising this right of first refusal. Myself, along with Mark Gilott and others in town, have been working to advise the board on how we might actually see this property protected and not developed. And so, this authorization from the Community Preservation Act would allow us, if indeed the project can go forward, to contribute, as stated, up to $120,000 towards a conservation easement on 23 acres of the parcel. That would protect the land in perpetuity. It would be an agricultural preservation restriction, for those of you that know that phrase. And so, the funding is there. If we vote tonight to advance this funding, the funding would be available for us to contribute to the project. If, for some reason, the project doesn't go forward, and we have to actually rescind our right of first refusal, the money would just go back into the Community Preservation Funds, from which it's being authorized. It's an opportunity for us to protect this farm ground. Without this funding, we have no other option, because there's, the whole conversation tonight is about money and the lack thereof. We don't have any other money from any other source for us to contribute to this project. And I should note that we are working with the Kestrel Land Trust to try and make this happen.
Any other discussion? Okay. Chris?
So, Bob, it didn't really cover the whole offer, which is, I understand, to be 430,000?
That's correct.
Okay. Have we, have you put together a plan that, let me go back to the offer. The offer had contingencies and was supposed to be completed in December 15th of this year, of last year, I'm sorry?
Not that year.
Okay. Well, okay. Well, the contingency called for two building lots on Straits Road. At this time, to my knowledge, we can't confirm that those are, can exist, because we don't have perk tests. Is that correct? Okay. So, in putting this project together, the validity of it would require that the offer, the buy-sell offer, would have to be valid as a result of these two lots being, in fact, verified, in order for that sale, a purchase-sale agreement to be valid. And that's why I'm wondering if we can't wait on this until we know in April whether that can happen.
So, I may ask the Town Council to weigh in on this. We looked at the contingencies that Chris has noted, and the contingencies are to get two building permits for two lots on Straits Road. Those two lots would be approval-not-required lots. They have 200 feet of frontage. There's almost 600 feet of frontage on this parcel on Straits Road, 598 to be exact. So there would be two ANR lots, no matter what, because it's a town way, it's a town road. Whether or not they could get building permits would be subject to whether or not they got a permit, the perk tests. It was the opinion of the Town Council that this is still a bona fide offer per Chapter 61A that the town would have to address, or the right of first refusal would have to meet, because it does involve, if I may, and please correct me if I'm wrong, it doesn't involve the need to change zoning.
Hi, I'm Tom Mullin. I'm the Town Council. This gets to Chapter 61A, Section 14, which says, "For the purposes of this chapter, a bona fide offer to purchase shall mean a good faith offer, not dependent upon potential changes to current zoning, or conditions, or contingencies relating to the potential for, or the potential extent of, subdivision of the property for residential use." The purchase-and-sale agreement that was sent to the town by the owner, who wanted to put us on notice that we either use our right of first refusal within 120 days or we lose it, that purchase-and-sale agreement did not, was not contingent upon any zoning change. So that first clause that I read, that has no application, nor is it contingent on any subdivision of the property. What it is contingent upon is the availability of two building permits for single-family houses. And that contingency is not set forth in the statute as something that would get in the way of this being a bona fide offer.
Okay. One more, Chris.
So essentially, if Article V passes, what we're going to end up doing, because only 23 of the 26 acres is actually protected, we're going to end up with three building lots. And the first two lots on Straits Road, from the two, it's unimproved from one end to the other. So in order to be a qualified lot, there's no electricity, there's no water out there, the road is barely passable. It's, there's signs on either end that says it's unimproved. I'm wondering if this would be an ironic twist, if we exercised this, because in order to make these viable lots, the town is going to have to provide services.
Paul, why don't you go right after Pete?
Go ahead, Paul.
Okay.
Paul Dostal, Main Street. I'd like to remind our voters that in the master plan, which was about 18 years old now, and there was a recent update a few years ago, that when the people we were going through and doing rezoning and all sorts of things, the top reasons that people wanted a master plan was to preserve farmland, continue with our rural character, preserve open space. There's many people in this room that love to live in, they live in Hatfield because they love that rural character. They love the farmland, they love the open space, they like to go down to the meadows, walk their dogs, walk and just see the birds and the eagles and everything else. If we lose this 23 acres, or 20 acres, or whatever it is, that's 20 acres we're never going to get back, because we're going to probably have houses there. So I urge you to support this project, or to support Article IV, and remember what you asked for in your master plan, preservation of farmland, our rural character, our open space, and what makes Hatfield Hatfield. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, I would just like to respond to Chris's comment. Without going into, and I can't go into any detail about the work that's being done by Kestrel Land Trust at this point, again, if we vote this through, we have the opportunity to put a conservation easement on 23 acres. If we don't, we'll end up with more than three lots. That's reasonably certain. We know from an agent of the offer that, at the Planning Board meeting, asked directly and answered that the plans are for a subdivision. So, if the worst that happens is that we have three lots, one on North Hatfield Road, two on Straits Road, and 23 acres protected, I think that's a pretty good trade-off.
Okay. Why don't we move this to a vote? This is going to be a majority vote. All those in favor of Article IV signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Article carries.
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Doty.
I move that we take up Article Number Five.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article Five is in your handout.
I move that the town appropriate by transfer from the Community Preservation Community Housing Reserve Account the sum of $60,000 for the acquisition of an affordable housing restriction to create a dwelling unit that is affordable to and occupied by a low or moderate-income household, and that meets the requirements for inclusion in the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development, Chapter 40B, subsidized housing inventory, on certain land located on North Hatfield Road, consisting of one acre, more or less, being part of the lot shown as Parcel 147.1 on Assessors Map 206, provided that the said restriction shall run with the land in perpetuity, or for the maximum period allowed by law, and meet the requirements of and constitute an affordable housing restriction under General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 12, and General Laws, Chapter 184, Section 31 through 33. Set funds to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee.
You've heard the motion read under Article Five. Is there any discussion?
Again, Bob Wagner, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. I'm just in anticipation of some questions. So, for those of you that remember, when we passed the Community Preservation Act in 2006, there's three segments of the Act in which we have to set aside or use 10% of the money on an annual basis for either historic preservation, which we do a fair amount of, open space and/or recreation projects, which we do a fair amount of, and community housing, which to date, we have done none. We have actually utilized some of the money to help with winterization and improvements at the senior housing. But we have not created a single house or unit, or rental unit, of community housing. We have $195,000 balance right now in that community housing fund, which we can only use for that purpose. We can't use it for anything else within Community Preservation Act. We can't use it for an elevator in town hall, or anything, or something here at the school. What the Community Preservation Committee is asking for is that we allocate $60,000 to further contribute to this project, if it can work out, and that a lot on this parcel as part of the protection, for all, to be honest, would be donated to Habitat for Humanity. And in return, we would get a permanent housing restriction on that house. Now, for those of you that know Habitat for Humanity or own... Now, for those of you that know Habitat for Humanity, our, our own Sandy Beldon, for many years, was on the board of the Pioneer Valley Habitat for Humanity. They build terrific homes, they're built in conjunction with the people who eventually are gonna buy them. Those individuals have to support a mortgage on the property, they have to provide sweat equity to build the house, and there's very specific standards as to what, the eligibility for, for an individual or a family to, to move into that, and to buy that property. I can't say for certain that this'll all come together, but we would like to have the option of having that extra $60,000 to contribute towards the protection of this property and the potential creation of an affordable unit here in Hatfield, which not only will help satisfy the expectations of the Community Preservation Act, but will also help us move towards meeting our state mandate of 10% of housing stock in town be designated affordable. And so with that, I really urge folks to vote for this. I can't promise that we'll actually be able to pull this off and use it, but again, if we don't, we can put the money back into our community housing account to use for something else in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Michael, and then I'll get you, Joan.
Quick question for Bob. Are we under the gun from the state to expend monies from that Community Preservation Housing Reserve, because we haven't really been doing much with it over the years?
That's a good question. Actually, it's, we are not legally under the gun right now, but I happen to also, I happen to serve on the statewide steering committee for the Community Preservation Coalition. And there is significant concern, because outside of the cities, in the Commonwealth, the community, community housing money is, is really not being used. It's hard. In small communities, these are expensive projects, the amount of money that's raised is not a lot of money. We have $195,000, which is a decent chunk of money, but even that is not a lot of money if you're really looking to do a significant project. And the Coalition is concerned, both favorably and unfavorably, they're concerned that the money isn't being used, and they're also concerned that there may be mandates down the road, or, or a rescission of some of that funding, if, if it isn't being used for what was intended by the, by the legislature.
I watch your meetings, Bob, and you guys are very, very thorough. Town's lucky to have you guys and what you do on that board. Joan?
Joan Cox, Main Street. I think affordable housing is really important, and I think Hatfield should do its bit for affordable housing. At the same time, I wonder whether there's a possibility that the town could get involved in the design, or some kind of rules about design for affordable housing. I've seen wonderful affordable housing, and I've seen really awful affordable housing. And I would love our town to be a model of really good architecture. I don't, I think you can combine good architecture with affordability, and it's certainly been done before. So, I guess my question to you, Bob, is whether, if not for this project, for future projects, is there a way that the town can enter into discussion about design features of affordable housing for Hatfield?
Well, certainly if a project, and now I'm wearing my hat as a Planning Board member, certainly if a project of any size that required Planning Board approval came to the Planning Board, we would have the opportunity to talk about design, and layout, and setup of such a project, whether it's a, an affordable housing project in and of itself, or one that actually is, is intermixed with and integrated into a larger development that includes mixed, mixed market rate, as well as affordable units. In this particular case, this would be a single-family home. It would be odd, a, an ANR lot, in all likelihood, it would, the parcel that faces or fronts on North Hatfield Road, if that, if it were to go this way. And I can say, from having spent time now looking at properties and houses built by Habitat for Humanity, they do a fabulous job. I think we would be very proud.
Thank you, Bob. Okay. All those in favor of Article Five signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, nay? Article carries. We do have, on May 14th, we have annual town meeting. May 21st is voting, please remember that. And February 25th is for the second vote, 26th on, on these items, the second step of the items we approved today. And I just want to say thank you so very much, and please remember the, what I spoke about communication. If you, if you know of ways that the town can hear all of us better, and we can communicate out better, please share it. We're, we're really struggling with it. Thank you for coming. I hereby dissolve this meeting.